I call the order this April meeting of the RSU 25 school board. Would you please join with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Josh, would you please be kind enough to take the attendance?
Yes, Mr. Fossey.
I am here.
Mr. Burgess.
Uh, here.
Mrs. Fossey.
Present.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Nealon has an excused absence. Mr. Wedgwood.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
And Ms. Atherton down.
Hello.
And so we have one absence. We have one absence. One absence. Yeah, okay. This is the time for public participation. If you would like to publicly participate, we have a lovely crystal podium that you can come up before us. If you are at home and would like to publicly participate, you may email us for publiccomment@publiccomment@rsu25.org, or you can phone in with public comment at 307-8099. Seeing as how we do not have a line, we will move on to item E, which is adjustments to the agenda.
So I have three adjustments for you. The first one, I have two additional resignations that we have received. Aaron Celia, Miles Lane school teacher, and Alicia Fairbank, administrative assistant at Bucksport Middle School. And then I would also like to add L14, which I would like to move just after the board chair's report. And we will be receiving an update on our school resource officer partnership with Bucksport Police Department.
Okay. Next, I would look for an approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the March 31st special board meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, that is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have communications and correspondence.
I have no communications correspondence for you this month.
All right. We have superintendents before.
So you had my report. Again, we have pretty much just immersed ourselves this past month in budgets and we've wrapped up negotiations. And again, I know the month of March and the end of February is a tremendous amount of time for you folks in meetings. And we've put on top of that interviews. And so I just want to thank you all for your contributions to the tremendous amount of time that you spend out during these last two months. It's a busy season, but you're patient with me as I'm doing it all for the first time and try not to screw it up too bad. So I appreciate the time and efforts that you put in. You know, I tried to detail out a lot of the agenda's items here for tonight. And then, like I was saying during the budget workshop, we're really just trying to keep an eye on local and global news stories just as the impact for us here on RSU 25. And as I get information and things come up, I'll make sure that I continue to keep you informed and updated and get your input and feedback as necessary on any issues.
Any questions for Josh? Board chairs report. So there has been an awful lot of exciting things which have happened. But as you all know, I am a tax accountant, and today is April 15th. It's a miracle that I even know what my own name is. I do seem to recollect that the middle school just had a play, "Battle Jewels," which was a very good thing.
Musical. He did tell us about it.
A good time.
Oh, I thought you knew.
And that the girls cheer team had a good trip down to Massachusetts. And that the robotics team is doing spectacularly, and they are going to be going to Worlds.
They just landed about 15 minutes ago. I gotta say, yes, on the way.
Other than that, I don't know anything. Please don't ask me any questions. Next, we will go on to update on school resources.
So I asked Director Gagen, Deputy Chief Winchester, and Officer Mar Selle to join us, mostly because, as you know, we've had this partnership with Bucksport PD for a number of years. And, you know, as Director Gagen, I think is going to illustrate to you through both numbers and anecdotes, we have something that's really pretty special here in this community in terms of the work and partnership that we have on a number of different levels. And honestly, there's not enough time, and Director Gagen will use a lot of time, so I'm not going to spill too much of his thunder here. But it really is pretty special, the partnership that we have, and it continuously morphs into whatever we need it to be at the moment. So I really just wanted to have him just kind of speak to you folks, give an update on where we are at in terms of our partnership, because we do support this both as a community financially, and then the RSU contributes to half of the school resource officer's salary. So we annually support this, and I just want him to be able to pass some information.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tripp, for having me here tonight. It's very hard to keep this brief, because we have been doing this for a long, long time. When we calculated it today, it's the better part of 30 years. It really started with me when I was on the road, and that was some time ago, unfortunately. With my interest in school and education and sports and football stuff, I worked my way into this RSU. It wasn't the RSU at the time, it was just a school department. Many, many years ago, I spent a lot of time in most of the schools, mostly with Mr. Carmaschado. Back in the day, Mr. Door, I could go on from principal after principal, because there's been almost as many principals as there have been town managers, and I'm going on to my sixth town manager this year after 36 years. So it will be hard for me to keep it brief, but I'll do the best that I can. So the program has been going on for almost 30 years. We started this with me, as I said, in the schools many, many years ago. This went on for a number of years, and in 2010, we actually brought it on as a part-time position. We were in the schools two or three, four days a week. Officer Welch did that for about four years, and in 2014, we actually hired the new position with the partnership with the school department, and it's been going on ever since. So it has been a day or two. In 2014, it went to full-time. We have recently, unfortunately, had some up and down times, and I'm glad to say that I do not believe that we have skipped a beat. Some of that, and I'm not tooting my own horn at all, I spend a lot of time in the schools when I can to cover the schools. That, along with Officer Marcel, is on another shift due to us losing a number of people, almost half our staff at one point. And the road does come first. So he's been on another shift for a while. Meanwhile, he has been in and out of the schools himself, along with myself. The K-9 is in and out of the schools. On usually, a few times a month, he was in and out of every school today. And that, of course, I won't elaborate on that, because everyone loves Axel when he's on the schools, to the point where I've actually found begging strips in Ms. Simpson's left top drawer in high school. They asked me to get something, and I said, "Where's this?" And I looked, and I'm like, it was a bunch of candy, but there was begging strips. So they do like him a lot, and they are in and out a lot. Other officers have visited the schools on a regular basis. And the main thing is that someone is always available to go in the schools if there isn't somebody in the schools, which is, I'll get into here in a bit, that is basically in the state of Maine, most places that's unheard of. It just is, and I'll get into that here in a bit. Some of the things that we now have going on, or we are currently working on with the RSU is the Alice program. That's an approach to active shooters. We're working on that program. And so you'll see some proposed maybe changes to standard operating procedures coming up here, because we have meetings. Trying to keep up with the times, trying to keep ahead of people that we deal with in these situations. We have school zone patrols in the mornings and the afternoons. I'm sure that you've seen us there a lot. We have meetings with students on a regular basis, basically about anything and everything. It doesn't matter what they need or what they want to talk about. There are some days, and this is a true story, there are some days there's a line outside of that office just to sit down and talk about school or a project. I did a project with a young man a few weeks ago on a stress management presentation, because I teach that at the academy and stuff. Just about everything. It could be family, it could be schoolwork, it could be anything. We have officers that participate in a lot of sports programs. We have fire departments and the robotics program. We have the K-9 program. We have lunch with an officer program. We sit on the HCTC board. We assist with many, many projects. We do ride long programs, intern programs, yearly safety planning with the school, all the schools and the superintendent. We have summer active shooter programs, and we have one here last year in high school. And I have to say, in the 36 years and as many as I've taken, that is by far one of the best trainings that we've had. We had tac team members from New York City. We had a lot of good instructors in that class and learned a lot from that. So it was good to do it in one of our schools. Active shooter, we sit on the risk review team. We have a meeting tomorrow at quarter 10. We do lockdown drills. We actually utilized one of those, unfortunately, last year. And I will say that after me preaching and preaching and preaching to all the schools for many, many years, unfortunately, we had to use that, and it went very, very, very well. The program that we had the meeting on today that you're going to hear about later, I think will add to that tremendously and make it a lot easier if that's possible. So we have the Mark Fatal crash. We haven't done that since COVID. We'll probably get that back up and running sooner than later. And we've also have meetings on campus and building security on a regular basis. As Dr. Tripp said, we met today, actually, on that. That's outside, in the classrooms. And we don't claim to be teachers, although a lot of the people who work for me are certified through the state of Maine to teach at the Maine Criminal Justice Academy. We go through weeks of training, not years of training, have to get certifications in order to teach, but we're not necessarily in there teaching classes, and I'll explain that here in a second. We do the DARE program, do Halloween safety classes, we read to the students. We've been asked to assist in the forensic classes on fingerprints and things of that nature at crime scenes. We sit in the health class. We've been asked to go in there. We bring the K-9 unit in. We talk about drugs, effects on the body. And in the end, he does a drug search demo with Axel that always goes over very well. We've been into science classes. Fire department participates in the egg draw program with our ladder truck. We work a lot of extra events for the RSU, sports, children's fairs, graduation class night. I give a prom speech every year, which I'm doing on May 17th for Mr. Ward this year. We work the prom, and the SRO actually handles most all of the complaints at the schools when he's available. And that is certainly quite a bit of work. Having said that, the numbers for last year in your schools are as follows. The high school, we had, I won't call them complaints, and I'll explain this in a minute. I'll go to hell through the numbers. The high school was 62, middle school 31, Miles Lane 19, Jewett School 11, for a total of 123, what we call cards or calls. There's a card going on right now in our CAD system for a speaking engagement. So all of those 123 are not bad things. They're not criminal things. They're not actual complaints that kids are misbehaving or anything like that. That's a card for everything that we actually do in the school. So just keep that in mind if you're with that. That includes K-9 demos, football games, anything we do, we draw a card on because we have to. As I said at the beginning, this is a very unique program. I have traveled all over the state and the country, and we actually have a lot of other places, a lot of other places ask us how we do what we do. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't communicate, and a lot of people don't work together. How they don't do this, I have no idea. With everything going on around the world and the country, they have to. And when I explain how we do it, the working relationship inside and outside of school, they just kind of shake their heads, because I guess they're not as close as we are. But it's a very unique relationship. We have a great working relationship with the RSU. I plan, as long as I'm here, for the next few years to keep that. And as I said, we get asked more and more by other places how we do it. And the thing that's changed is when I started as a patrolman coming in the schools many, many decades ago, actually, it was always, "Who were they here to get today? Who were they here to get today?" We've gone from that to basically, "Where have you been? And why haven't you been?" I got a text message from a teacher in this building today, and I had to come out and said, "Do you not like us anymore?" question mark on my phone. So I landed here and did a small class with him, with the kids and stuff, and it goes well. But we've come a long ways since the beginning. I could go on and on. In a nutshell, the relationship is good. We plan on keeping it. It's unique. And I do also have Officer Marcel and Deputy Chief Winchester here. If you two have anything to add to that, feel free, because I could go on, as Mr. Tripp said about this, for hours, but I won't. Thank you, Neil, the chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
And I think what I would just add to that is, whatever number Director Gagen put out there for 123, quadruple that number in terms of the number of positive contacts that we have that never give up, that cards aren't being put down, the number of times that we can just reach out as administrators and say, "Can I run this by you? Like, we don't quite know how to handle this situation. What resources do you have? We have a kid that's having a tough time. Can you just come talk to them? Like, you're not wearing a uniform, you're not wearing a badge, you're just coming in and having an outside influence with a student." And the answer is always yes. It may not be right this second, but the answer is always yes, and we can make sure that happens. We certainly appreciate the board's support and never even questioning the financial commitment to a school resource officer. It's worth every single cent that we put into it. So, gentlemen, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
But you also don't feel obligated to have to stay the entire meeting, because I know you.
But just before you leave, I just want to also thank you. I was a student when Gagen was just starting out. So I understand exactly that mentality that you were talking about, of what there used to be here. And it wasn't just the teaching staff, it was also the students. And the students had a feel that the police were, got someone out there to help them, but somebody out there to get them. And this program, I think, does a wonderful job of showing that the police are an important member of the community and that are there to help them and to protect them, and not just to harass and annoy them and pick them up for speeding, which occasionally Mr. Gagen has done correctly. Correctly, though, I would say. And he has done a good job of improving my behavior.
You're cynical.
Similar praise due to Officer Winchester.
Is there any other comments we'd like to say to the boards before they go out to do their much more important tasks?
I think relationships like we have with the police department, with our town garage, how we buy our fuel, all of these community relationships, they're very economical for us. There are shared costs throughout the community, but it allows us to put our money into our students. I think that we see that in this budget, you know, maintaining our increases and, you know, making them hopefully a manageable level for our communities. But it's by leveraging those community relationships is a lot of what we're doing or have done over the years as a board to, and it directly comes back to help the students in financial, you know, their communities and not paying as much for the services we're doing here at the school, and our students get a better education out of it. So just keep doing that. Thank you.
And they are just about full staff now, too, which I'm very thankful, because Mr. Ward and mine's coffee tab will decrease drastically when Director Gagen gets out of this building and actually goes back down to public safety, and Deputy Chief Winchester gets another headache back in his building. But thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Next, we have committee reports. First is Christina.
Oh, right. I don't have a huge report, because Christina's gonna, she has a couple of agenda items today. But we met the other day on April 10th, and we added public comment. We had none, but we did add it. We had Tara come to the meeting, and she explained kind of a different way we're going to be utilizing our special ed teachers with respect to the teaching and the IEP paperwork that has to go. It doesn't really, it doesn't change anything about positions. It's just a different model of doing it that other schools are already utilizing with success. So she explained that to us, and that was kind of nice to try. And she's got a couple of teachers that are willing to do the paperwork portion, which is the biggest challenge. So I think that's going to go pretty well. And then Christina, we went over the health curriculum again, because the first time we went over it, we didn't have a high attendance in our particular meeting. I think there was a budget negotiation meeting the same night, so it was just bad timing. So we reviewed that again. She was going to talk about it tonight. We reviewed the K-12 music curriculum draft. Everything looks really good. We, you know, kind of gave our blessing, so she's going to bring it to the board. And then Josh gave us some district updates. Because he's like a super mean superintendent who has not called more than one school snow day, we're actually going to get out June 10th instead of, I don't know, the 31st or whatever it was going to be. It's only 30 days in June, but anyway, so that's a good thing. And he gave us some updates on the Gift and Talented program, Skills USA, and the robotics teams. And we will meet Thursday, May 1st is our next meeting date.
Any questions for Christina? Finance committee did not meet because we had our budget worked. Policy?
The policy committee, we did not meet due to budget season and negotiations and such going on, but looking forward to getting back on that. I think we have some work to do. A couple of things came out of negotiations that we need to actively start working on, so looking forward to it.
Facilities?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Anthony McGuire for all the work he's done as a facilities director. He runs a really good meeting, and we get a lot of good information from him. Without getting too detailed, so we met last Thursday, and we discussed the school grounds and the outdoor facilities. And one of the things we talked about was the high school track and the bleacher damage from the winter windstorm that we had. The bleachers that overturned and damaged will be replaced by the towns, and it's going to be covered under their insurance. Also, some of the areas of the track, and Abby brought to our attention tonight, there's some surface repair that needs to be done, too.
I did not trip.
And she did roll her ankle, so.
They repaired it yesterday.
Oh, good. This was like about two weeks ago that I noticed it, and I just thought I should say something. Yeah, sorry.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
But at least you were aware of it. I wasn't sure if anyone brought it to your attention.
Okay, and far the other thing up on the track, the Oswald's Plum is going to be opening up concession stand soon. And someone brought to the attention that there's some shingles that need to be replaced on top of the concession stand.
It's created on tomorrow.
Okay, cool. The baseball and softball fields are all looking good right now. Coach Protellus has mentioned something about the softball dads wanted to assist in preparing Wardwell Field for the season by having an organized field. So maintenance issues. The completed BIMS project update, the boilers have been reported to be functioning well, and the recently replaced siding on the middle schools are holding up well. Then we had a lengthy discussion on, that was held regarding the window replacement for the Miles Lane and the Science Wing at the high school. We worked out a strategy to replace the Science Wing windows this year and the Miles Lane windows next year. The welding shop layout, Anthony presented an interesting interactive computer design for the new high school welding shop that outlined the different stages of the installation process. And then we discussed very briefly the FY '26 budget. We had a brief discussion that took place. We got any upcoming fiscal year budget considerations.
Any questions? All right. HCTC?
We did meet. One of the things we discussed was enrollment for next year. At the present time, it's 320, but that will change. Last year was 295, so it's nice to have it up. But that 320 will change, especially over the summer, things happen. Out of that, 54 students from Bucksport will be going as of right now. HCTC is sending 15 students to their national Skills USA, and two of them are coming from Bucksport High School. It's Abby Farricka and Grace Burley. Hope I pronounced those right. So we're proud of that. And cybersecurity is a go. It's only about 16 students, and it's the lowest of all of them, but it's still a go if we can find instructors.
And how many people go on a bus?
What's that?
How many people go on a bus?
Well, you got two sessions is 54. So you're ordering, so you're sending out 54. Yeah, there's a morning session.
So we don't have to worry about more than one.
No, I do.
Okay. Any other questions?
I can give you those numbers. It's like, well, I have 56, there's 32, and 24.
Okay. So we should be around the hour. That was just a word. We had to get another bus going. Okay. Old business, none? New business? We have some resignations and retirements?
Yes, so for resignations, we have Aaron Celia, Celia, I'm sorry, Miles Lane school teacher. And then the two additions that we have from the adjustments, Alicia Fairbank and, oh, I guess that's the under-support staff. I'm sorry. So Aaron's just for teachers and administrators. And then on the support staff, we have Gary McBride, Justin Davis, Cindy Lozier, and Alicia Fairbank.
Okay. I would look for a motion to accept the resignations and retirements with a regret.
I move that we accept the retirements and resignations as presented with good ground.
Second? We have a motion, multiple seconds? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
And I did miss one on there, right?
You tried.
From coaches co-curricular, Casey Pellet here.
Yeah.
I didn't mention that, but it was okay. I'll include it in that.
Yeah.
Okay, that, right? No, we're all good.
We'll have our good side.
We won't hold her on. Okay. Next, we've got nominations.
So the first nomination we have, and Andrew Shory was with us this evening, is our nomination for the Bucksport Middle School Assistant Principal, Athletic Director. Andrew's come to us, has the same position at PCSS, so Scadis Community Secondary School. And prior to that, this is not exactly why we hired him, although I do like it, he was a high school math teacher.
Lies. Lies.
And also coached football at Dexter, so has interviewed very well. We were very fortunate to have a deep pool of candidates, had four or five really good interviews. And, you know, we were excited to be able to choose that some of them was going to fit our culture. And we believe that Andrew is going to really fit in well with our staff and our students. And I know that Mrs. Dickie's excited, you know, for him to come in and go Mrs. McCourty's shoes this year. So Andrew, welcome. If anybody has any questions or anything, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I'm sure you'd be happy.
Does anyone have any question?
Welcome.
Great.
You want to do this one, then we do the others?
Why don't we do this one separately, then? So then I would look for a motion to accept the nomination of Andrew Shory for BMS Assistant Principal and Athletic Director.
Well, I move that we accept Andrew Shory as Bucksport Middle School Assistant Principal and Athletic Director.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You don't have to stick around.
But I don't know why anyone would ever leave. It's so much, leave there, we newly hired, no, I'm just kidding. So kidding. And I'll count against you if you leave.
Next, we have nominations for coaches and co-curriculars.
So we have three volunteers to bring forward. We have Matt Winchester that will be helping out with Bucksport High School baseball. Mackenzie Smith will be helping out with the high school softball team. And Tim Nason helping out with the middle school baseball.
It's wonderful whenever anyone from the community is willing to volunteer to help out for our teams.
And lots of former players and athletes from here. All were really good athletes and good role models, leaders on their team, and now get to continue that with future Golden Buck athletes. So it's always fun to bring these names forward.
Yeah, so I would like to.
I would like to make a motion to accept the nominations for the block.
There you go. And we're going for a second? We have a second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. We have no first or second readings of policies, so we can move through that rather quickly. Next, we have consideration to approve the BMS outdoor club to attend a weekend. Teens to Trails. I thought that said Tennessee, so I. I thought that said Tennessee, so. Teens to Trails.
We're just gonna leave for a weekend.
Guys, they're not as good as A's.
So Mr. Fisher is here and has put together another, a well put together proposal for you and I think another great opportunity for his outdoor club.
I like the hot.
If you don't want me to present, I don't. I do guys, I like it. Why?
This is just for Dan.
Yeah, they're only good. What's the purple nail?
Okay, so this is a overnight trip on Mother's Day weekend to Birch Point Beach camping trip to Owl's Head. Has anyone ever been there before? It's near Lucia Beach. I think this is actually the former Lucia Beach before the state park took over. So a lot of wild nights there for a lot of folks. Thankfully, it's not as wild anymore. So our club attended.
Not because I've been there.
I got that from locals. The locals said this used to be the.
Scott Fraser, like, Tidyma.
So our club attended the same exact trip, the same location last school year with a group of last year's eighth graders and with the same chaperone. So this is a pretty seamless kind of thing for us to do at this point. So this is a Teens to Trails sponsored event with other middle schools attending from around the state. Hopefully, we were the only ones who actually showed up last year, so we got the whole beach to ourselves, which is really nice, and I'll show you some pictures there. Teens to Trails staff will also be on site overseeing events and assisting with various activities. Registration for the weekend is $100 and then I estimate our food budget to be about $300. We have money left in our club account from the Life Happens Outside Challenge where we won $1,000. And we've also gotten some grants to help support the work that we're doing. So we should be all set for the funds. No kid will have to pay anything to attend this trip. I don't need to go over the mission, vision, values. So Birch Point State Park, if you've ever been to Thomaston or Owl's Head, this is kind of the location here. Lucia Beach is right here. We're also gonna be going to Owl's Head Lighthouse for a day trip. And then we're also gonna go to Camden Hill State Park and do some hiking. Mount Leventhal in particular, if you guys have ever been up that way. We're gonna stick to just that and then we'll drive up to Mount Batty on the Mount Batty access road as well. And we'll do the lighthouse and the Camden Hills, all on the same day on Saturday. So we'll be camping outside in tents both nights. Our club will have our own space to set up our campsite. Students will tent with members of the same gender or tent solo. Those are the options that they have. Last year, everyone, it was fun, went off without a hitch. And then chaperones will be tenting solo in and around all the student camping areas, so. And then the, there is an outhouse. There's no running water there, so we do have to take all our water there. Teens to Trails is in the house on site as well, so we'll prepare for that ahead of time and bring some drugs of water and borrow some from the athletic department, hopefully. And then if students don't have any tents or sleeping systems, then we have access to main gear share, which through our membership with Teens to Trails, we have free access to gear. You name it, they have it that we can borrow. Cookware, tents, extra clothing, outdoor stuff, they have it all. This is some of the photos from last year of the kids kind of setting up camp there, which was a nice experience to watch them struggle, be humble. We'll also do a service project as part of the event. Teens to Trails always has an agreement with the state parks because we have the state park to ourselves and there's no other people there. We do a service project there. So we did some clearing of brush and also maintaining some trails that went to wash out that happened on the beach the previous winter. We'll make a group shopping list and meal plan. I'll talk to the kids once we get the number of kids selected and the types of diets that they want and what food they're interested in having, so I don't do that beforehand. I do have sample meal plans and camp cooking recipes readily available if the kids don't have ideas. The meals during the trip will be Friday dinner, Saturday breakfast, lunch and dinner, and then a Sunday breakfast before we come back in time for Mother's Day lunch for the kids.
Boy, I thought the Mother's Day treat was they were gonna be gone during Mother's Day.
They get a few hours.
I'm beside our, beside my children now.
So we're doing some food prep, some old fashioned pot dog roasting on the fire, bagel roasting by the fire, which gives it a nice piney taste. And then of course, s'mores by the fire as well. Students will bring their own gear. Again, if they don't have it, then main gear share will provide it and we'll do a good communal sort of organization of the whole thing and all hands will be on deck to pitch in if kids need us for support. I'm sharing this packing list with kids. This is all very detailed, exactly what to bring. It's a checklist, so there's no questions about anything and it's two pages long with some optional stuff there, so it's really organized for the kids and really shouldn't be any questions about that stuff. Transportation, students will be transported in a district van driven by me. And then throughout the weekend, we'll be going to and from all those locations. So the lighthouse, Camden Hills, and anywhere else we decide to go on Saturday and then also to and from Bucksport Middle School on Friday and on Sunday. All of our gear, group cookware, food, and miscellaneous supplies will be transported by Ms. Sue Fourth in a separate vehicle, which her husband's letting her borrow a gutted out van, so we can just kind of throw everything in there, which worked out well last year. I'm hoping to take between eight and nine eighth graders. This is their last month of school, so this is a nice way to sort of end the year with them. I'm attempting to have an even number of boys and girls, but that depends on who's interested and who can go. The same chaperones as last year, myself, and then Ms. Sue Fourth, math teacher for eighth grade, and Ms. Murphy, science teacher for eighth grade. So the selection of students, our second Metawistler trip, which you guys approved earlier this year, unfortunately had to get canceled because Ms. Sue Fourth was supposed to go on the trip and her mother had a stroke and she's the primary caregiver, so that was all like right before the trip. So I couldn't find anyone else to go and also would have had to be more approved and all that stuff. So the good news is that grant is good for the entire calendar year, not just the school year, so we can still go next fall, which I gotta figure out another presentation to give you guys about that trip. And next year's eighth graders, so I'm gonna try to take those kids who were scheduled to go on that trip. If they can't go or aren't interested, then I'll go to the next tier, which will be kids who've been expressing interest to go overnight camping and maybe haven't been able to attend a major event with us. And then if I still need some people to go, then I'll go to the kids who have gone to a lot of things and have been really kind of hardcore outdoor club kids to kind of reward them for that. And obviously, this time of year, a nice little carrot out for the kids is that respect, safety and responsibility in school, which we definitely considered strongly in the selection process. There are gonna be, hopefully, again, other middle schools there with us to interact with. But just so you guys know, it's not just us, at least as of right now, that's kind of the plan. Again, we have three school issued first aid kits on hand, one with a chaperone. We'll have two vehicles on site just in case there is an emergency, so that always is nice in case we need to take kids somewhere. Emergency contact information will be on hand and I'll utilize, reach my teach to communicate with parents directly. And then obviously, safety expectations and school rules will be adhered to and reiterated throughout the weekend. And there will be no swimming in the ocean in case you guys are worried about that. That is not happening, although I don't know why anyone would want to because it's so cold this time of year, but you never know. And I just want to end with some photos from last year. So this is kind of the setting. This is the beach that we have to ourselves every day. I was the only one who got up for sunrise in the morning. No one else wanted to join me. Last year, we were lucky enough to witness the northern lights and this is like within a month of the total eclipse, so it was really cool to see that. And we had no idea that was gonna happen and all of a sudden, like, oh, this is kind of weird clouds. And then like people started trickling onto the beach, like, they get a glimpse of things and they're like, yeah, it's northern lights. And we're like, oh my God. And then it was just this incredible.
Could you see that, that without your camera or?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't like this.
That enhances it.
Yeah, it wasn't like quite as vivid, but still.
But you could still see.
You could still see it. I mean, it was really pretty incredible. And then this is some of the exploring that we did. And this is honestly the best part of the trip, is that it gets the kids outside exploring without any structure. And, you know, we looked at some like tidal pools and some worms and stuff and some wildlife there. Us on top of Mount Leventhal and then us at Owl's Head Light. We got to do, last year, there was an astronomer came with a Davsonian telescope and we got to do some stargazing, astronomy stuff, and that's kind of our last circle on the last day. So that's the trip in a nutshell. And I also just wanted to share that last year, this trip was featured by the Maine Department of Education. I helped do a little write-up for that. And so we were featured on the Maine DOE website and all about that experience and what it meant to the kids. And they gave me a lot of feedback, so there's a lot of student quotes in here anonymously. And then also, the Teens to Trails page has made our school the headline of the whole middle school athletics page. And they feature, you know, all of our photos and highlights from last year. So just thought you guys would be interested in that. So a lot of good publicity also for the school and for the, for the town, so.
Well, the chaperone situation that happened, is there any way to get a backup chaperone or?
Well, I had a backup and then they got sick.
Oh.
Cause you have, you have Dan wants to go on this trip.
So this, I have two who are coming.
I have a backup.
I was just wondering if that happens again. It's unfortunate. It was getting us out on that.
Yeah, it's also a hard sell for getting teachers to give up a whole weekend and spend it cabin fever eighth graders.
Wasn't that a winter trip as well?
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
Very, it was like late winter. It was like March, mid-March, and so it was, it was not something. And I was also concerned about like needing more approval again if I had new chaperones or change in the plans.
You could make that call.
Once I found out that the money would still be there for next school year, I just, we'll just do that. And all those kids actually did get to go on a ski trip. We did two ski trips, one to Saddleback and then one to Black Mountain.
Oh, good.
And all those kids who were signed up to go, had an opportunity to go ski and they did. So they had a great time in there, so. Any questions?
Well, I would like to do this.
Yes.
Well, I would like to. Make a motion to approve this trip. This looks really exciting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this trip as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you all very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leave the condition as being.
Foster children.
I have not gone on Facebook since what, that, so I'm sorry.
Next, we've got nomination and possible approval of teachers for second year probationary contracts.
So you have a list on here, so all of these teachers have completed their first year probationary status with us in RC 25. And so you have, well, you will notice that there are some names on here that you are thinking, how can they be first year probationary teachers?
I was thinking Mark Nesslussin.
Cause they've been here for 30 plus years. Remember, if you are retired and then you get rehired, then you move back into a probationary status or if you have a change. So it is accurate. That is the same Mark Nesslussin that.
Mike Cowling.
You have same, Mr. Cowling and Mrs. White, so. Yeah, so there's our list for, to move into second year probationary contracts. I move that we approve the second year probationary contracts for the teachers as listed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have nomination and possible approval of teachers for continuing contracts.
So this list of teachers have just finished their second year probationary and have all been recommended by their administrators to move on to a continuing contract for the next school year.
Are we sure about words?
Mr. Ministers is here.
I'm holding out for this.
Some son tells me he did a pretty good presentation. I'm willing to put him forward.
Seems like he's going above and beyond.
I would look for a nomination. I move that we approve the teachers for continuing contracts as listed.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Dan even finally raised his hand. Next, we have consideration to approve staff members to take time off without pay.
Yes, so every once in a while, we get one of these unique situations that come forward where a staff member has a one-off opportunity to take advantage. It doesn't necessarily fit within the standard vacation time that we have for a school year. And if you're in a support staff contract, you cannot use your vacation time to take off when children are present. So even though you have some vacation time, it's not like you can use that to take it off during the school year because they are contracted for a certain amount of days. So Karla Kopas, and I believe there's a form in your package that you're gonna look at, you know, approached Darcy and then came to me well in advance. And to me, it meets the criteria of one of these one-off experiences where they tried to do the, to make it fit and when you're trying to get together with a number of family members that are not educators, it doesn't always all fit in the same timeframe. So has made this request. It would be without pay, but again, for them to take something off without pay would need more approval. It is my recommendation that you would approve this and we have coverage set up.
I would move that we approve Karla Kopas's request to take time off without pay. Second? We have a motion and a second, and this does have coverage.
Yes.
All those in favor?
He's just showing me that this was denied, but was there, was it worked out?
So we deny it because it is.
Because there's not enough, okay. I just wanted to address that. Sorry, we just noticed it right before voting.
So good, that's a good point. So Mrs. Dickey did the right thing. She has to deny it because we cannot use vacation to take this without border.
Okay.
It's a formality.
It's a formality.
Perfect. All right.
She knew that it was gonna be denied.
It sounds like they, that you guys were behind it, but when he saw that, I.
Well, that's a, that's a good catch.
So.
Okay, sorry about that.
Motion and a second. We have all those in favor?
Okay, you got us.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have administrator reports. This month's report will be done by animals.
Mr. Ward was anxious to get his turn again because he was.
I feel as though I was set up the first time I did this. So if you remember the last time I was with you, I had a lengthy, what, 30 to 45 minute presentation about an HCTC crosswalk. And then the last several months, I proceeded to see all the wonderful displays of, you know, smiling children and all this stuff, so I figured, here's my chance, right, to kind of, you know, touch upon some things at BHS, so really excited about this. I partnered up with our publications class to put together a video. It's kind of a trendy thing that apparently is sweeping away, so it's a, yes, it's a, it's a day in the life, right? So we sat down and kind of figured out, okay, how can we capture what a day in the life of a BHS student is like here? And I think they did a pretty good job. Obviously, we can't get everything just because limitations with the schedule and whatnot, but I think you'll see what really makes BHS special and that's our staff and our students, right? And, you know, the stories they tell, how well they know each other, and just the fun and the joy you see. I think that's really what you're gonna see, and this is very much a lighthearted, fun presentation as to what a day is like with some random questions, right? And they had a really good time doing it, and it really shows just the climate culture that we've kind of built at BHS and it's just a great place to be. So I hope you enjoy it and thanks to our publications class for helping me out. Hopefully all of us, bear with me.
Publications, bailing them out.
And this may be a little loud, so I'll adjust the volume if you need.
Welcome to Bucksport High School. My name is Aaron Ward, principal here at BHS, and we are excited to share a day in the life of our fantastic students and staff. Welcome.
What am I hearing? What subject do you teach?
Tentatively right now, we're looking at outside. Hopefully that is much better weather than what we have right now. Although if Mr. is any indication, who knows? So if we do not have good weather and doesn't cooperate, we will move that a couple of days in advance. We'll let everyone know and shift it inside. So. That's perfect. So any questions, anything I'm missing?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Just raise your hand. Next, we have consideration that the school board approved expenditure funds from the technology reserve account to support the purchase of a new virtual server in the amount up to $120,000.
So Mr. Morrell will be joining us from behind the curtain here to give you more intelligent details about this project. What I will say on the surface is this is a project that we've had and works for law and the money is that market. Inside the technology reserve account have previously been designated for this purpose. And again, always earlier, we were talking about partnerships in terms of how this works with the town, on public safety, personnel. It's also shared services and this server that we are looking to purchase is not going to be all on us and Mr. Morrell will kind of go into that a little bit. But what I will say is that the money that is in our technology reserve account has been there and has been earmarked for this purpose for a period of time. The language in this is pretty key, up to $120,000. We do not expect this to come in at $120,000. But as we're still getting the dollar amounts for this, we don't want to be locked into a certain amount. And remember for technology reserve accounts, money goes in through your vote and money comes out through your vote. This does not, this is different than capital reserve account money that has to come out through voter approval through the town. The other reserve accounts, the board is the one that would authorize us. That's why I'll let you get down and get to the project.
Yeah, so five and a half years ago, when something called COVID hit us, we had a little delay in deploying our new virtual servers. So basically what virtual servers are, is a big block of hardware that's stationed somewhere within our town and it allows us to run multiple machines on it. So the big server upgrade that we just did, or excuse me, the big heating upgrade that we just did, we were able to save some money on that because there's no physical box sitting somewhere running that equipment. It all goes through our network and talks to a virtual system. That virtual system is very nice. We did an upgrade last week and the upgrade didn't go well. So I turned it off and turned on the backup unit and we wrapped it running without anyone even knowing there was an issue. Correct the issue, we did the upgrade. Prior to the virtual system, that was a box that was offline. Anthony would be like, hey, I got something to manage. I'd be like, standby, but we're working on it. So this system, this solution, and I don't like to use the branding to do. I gladly share with people just for security reasons and how things are deployed inside our district. We do have a series of hardware that backs each other up. So we think about every function it does, that system's doing it twice in case something fails, the other one picks up. Then we have a third, a second location that is separate from where those ones are stored for disaster recovery. For some reason where that store would have cash drop failure, a fire, a flood, a building demolition, some of those lines, we can still have our data and tactics used directly back on. So we're looking to replace the main unit. Like we said, up to $120,000, the prices have gone up since five years ago when we purchased it. And we're also hoping to be able to recycle the hardware for some money to come back in. The way our system works is every five years, we have a warranty on that hardware. So if anything fails, they overnight have to replace it. Because we have redundancy, we should never actually be down. Now we're on software extension, which although is much more affordable, it only has software support. So any software upgrades, security upgrades, we have. If a piece of hardware died right now, we'd be looking to buy that hardware. We'd have to see the hardware, we're going to repair it right now and put it back in place. So by doing this upgrade, we get the five-year additional warranty. So this problem will continue. And the virtual system for us is the way to go. We're able to build many, many machines. We started off with nine servers. We thought we were going to reduce that number. We actually stayed at nine, but we do many more functions. As we mentioned, the heating servers, virtual servers as well. So I don't want to go too deep in the technical aspects. Welcome to do it if someone has questions on it. But just want to give you enough to know what we're doing. And as Mr. Tripp pointed out, this is a town collaborative project. The 75-25 split, because we use about three times the server use in virtual systems as they do. They put in their budget in order to accommodate the other 25%.
So without getting to location.
Yeah.
Do we own the physical hardware? Or is this parsing out something for server far up there? Someplace far up?
That's a very good question. Mr. Foster's inquiry is, do we touch and own that hardware? Or are we sitting in the cloud with those servers? We, the town and us, have never been comfortable with all of our services in the cloud that we need to hang our data. So we physically own two sets of that hardware. And the way that's connected is that we have, it's called dark network. It sounds terrible. But basically we have independently owned fiber that's straight between town buildings and schools. So we're able to locate equipment in different locations and all talk about having to go to get it.
Kind of a closed loop.
Exactly. It's a closed network. They call it a dark fiber. It just sounds very creepy.
Sounds very bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's the full extent of the point.
I did bring up a secondary note so that you do know in three years, we'll be set to replace the disaster recovery. Disaster recovery runs above half the cost of the main extension. Because it doesn't have the ability to run everything we're done. It has enough to keep us online to replace the equipment that we have warranties on. We, over time, we've only had one issue with the software. I try to still do my updates on the weekend, even though technically I can update the system live play. I'm an old school guy, I would like that. So Sunday, I came in at four in the morning, moved the system, did the upgrade, and it got stuck. So on a Sunday morning, whatever it was, in two hours, I had tech on the phone and we were able to relieve the problems. And there was no cost to us because of the warranty and the purchase. So that's great on a Sunday, because normally it runs $400 to $1,000 an hour for tech score in a week.
Any other questions?
When an update goes wild, how long do they take?
That actually was a big update. That took, because each box updates individually, so don't lose services. That one was supposed to take about 40 minutes. At the hour mark, I made the phone call. But generally speaking, it's about 30 minutes.
Normally.
Yeah, and again, the service is still running. Because the way the system does it, it updates one, moves everything over. It's quite unique. But I still try to use caution and make sure I can use good practice.
Yeah.
Is this our entire technology reserve account? Or is there still some left in it after this?
There is still money in there and we will have more money moving into it. We're still waiting on our FY '24 audit to get completed. Once we have that, you remember right going back, after FY '23, we have about an 8.3% unallocated fund balance. So we will be using some of that fund to start replenishing our reserve accounts.
And how much do we have left? Do you know the amounts?
174.
So we don't have much left. It'll only be $50,000 left? After we take this out?
If we use all 120, this is on model two.
Okay.
So one thing that Keith was absent from was your discussion at the very beginning of the meeting about why we're accelerating some of our technological purchases.
So we are cautiously trying to navigate the global impact on tariffs. And we do not believe that any type of technological purchase is going to get cheaper, it's only going to get more expensive, upwards of 35% more expensive. So we are even looking at our physical hardware devices then for next year to use, move monies around where we're using this year's purchase by next year and then use next year's money to buy non-hardwear stuff. So try to avoid 35% savings. This project is not going to get cheaper than this right now. And that's why I said front of you right now. So, but we're confident that technology reserve account, what left over there, Mr. Morrell's done a really nice job at not putting all of the projects. So they're staggered. We know that we're going to have to buy some devices here pretty quickly that we'll be using, but we have more money that we're looking at.
I just didn't want to short ourselves for an upcoming emergency that's probably going to happen because of the world we live in.
Yes.
So that was just my, you know.
Well, I think Jim saw that coming a little bit too. Because if I remember correctly, you came and talked to us about this last year and told us we should squirrel away some money now.
Yeah, because last year technically our hardware warranty came up, or would come at the purchase sale. So the hardware warranty ran out in February, because they gave us a little leeway because we were delayed in solving for some reason. So they gave us a little leeway there. So the software extension is what we talked about. Hey, we're going to do the software extension. We really need to get back on board with the hardware. And as Keith pointed out, this is our big major infrastructure purchase. I mean, there's nothing more expensive in the district that we will purchase. But the tech reserve does come in handy, you know, we've got network infrastructure projects to do. And what we've done since 2018, we have big infrastructure. And if you go back to the budget now, we have about $15,000 in there. So we start doing segments of slowly but surely so we don't have to come back to do that big purchase again. So the remaining $54,000, I'd expect to be closer to $100,000. My goal is to get us under $100,000. So we leave about $74,000. The last big expense we had in that was when we transitioned to the new payment system, the new accounting system.
It's a good question though, because we always wanted a healthy fund balance in there for disasters. But we feel like we have, between our unallocated fund balance and we need to, we'll have to move some money in to, and then a lot of them. And again, we don't expect this to come out to be the full $120,000. But it is good to have that cushion in case tariffs sit us before.
And we work with our vendor, spoke with them yesterday. And if you're in business, quarter two is wrapping up. They're looking towards projection of quarter two. So I said, hey, if anything comes up and you happen to have, you know, 5%, you're trying to get into this quarter, I can probably work with my school board and see if we can buy it. So that's, I'm trying to make sure we get the timing right as well.
Sounds like there's a few pressures to make this sale want to happen sooner than later.
Yeah, again, from just the financial standpoint, but really, this gives us a tremendous amount of security. We don't make this type of investment lightly. If this fails on us, we'll have lots of issues that Mr. Morrell's life becomes far more miserable.
Like he used to be when I wondered if, when we had power outage, how many servers had to replace before Monday morning, before the next business.
And again, because the town is deeply entrenched to this too. If this doesn't work, you know, Director Giggins stays not off to a great start. This has a big impact, so it's important. And the town is supportive of this.
Correct. They've put an equal amount of that 25% in the budget that hopes that neither one of us expend the full amount.
And I would look for a motion to accept the post.
Well done. I move that we approve the expenditure funds from the technology reserve account to support the purchase of a new virtual server in the amount of up to $120,000.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Next, we have consideration to adopt kindergarten through 12 health curriculum.
All right, this is all.
Yeah, towards the bottom of the agenda, so I'm going to agree. I promise. Plus three of you have already heard this. And for three, a couple of you, this is like your third time hearing it. So as you know, I've been working on a five-year cycle to update all of our curriculum documents for all the different content areas. And so health education was one of those topics for tonight and for this year, not tonight, it's topic for tonight right now. So I worked with Jess Carter, who was our health teacher in the district, and also Ed Hatch, who teaches a section of health as well. And the PE teachers were kind of, we were all working together between PE and health. We've already approved the PE document. Tonight we're looking at the health. So we've met over the course of a few meetings this year to look at the new health standards, the main learning result health standards that were signed into law in the summer of 2022. And we feel pretty confident in the document that we've created, that we are aligning all of our practices and resources to those updated standards. In your digital packet, you have the full document. And then in your physical packet, you have what I call those one-pagers that I give you. Just kind of gives you an overview, so you don't have to read all 40 pages of a curriculum document, if you want to. So basically, just a couple of things that I would want you to know about the health curriculum is in our district, K through four, Gen Ed classroom teachers cover the health content in their classrooms. We do not have standard health classes. So those happen during a combination of morning meeting sessions, maybe some SEL time that they have. It's just integrated more. I will tell you that I have shared this draft with our two district nurses. And I haven't had a chance to share this with Darcy and Nicole yet, but they are also interested in however it fits in their schedule coming into elementary classrooms to help cover some of the content standards in here. So to support those teachers. At grades five through eight, Jess Carter does a health class as a unified art for specials. So all of our students get a standalone health class in those grades. And then nine through 12 is a graduation requirement that high school students do take a health class. So either Jess or Ed see them for their health class. You'll see that the standards are broken down into six different strands. Health concepts, information products and services, promotion and risk reduction in the health field, activities that you can take to influence your health, communication and advocacy, and decision-making and goal setting. So not only is it like physical health, there's also a lot of social, emotional, mental health in there for students. A couple of important things to know would be that this does, the curriculum that we've presented to you does cover a couple of laws in the state of Maine outside of the main learning results. One of them being that all students in pre-K through fifth grade do have to receive lessons in the school district on child sexual abuse awareness. That's a law in East Bay. We're doing it right now. We have this embedded into this curriculum. We do notify parents when that takes place. Right now Heather Rockliff is taking care of that at the lower level and Jess takes care of it at fifth grade. And then the other piece would be puberty education. So that is embedded into this curriculum as well. That happens at the fifth grade level. Jess takes care of that as well and does notify parents about that content. In the new learning results, it does push a little bit of that down to the fourth grade, just basically like body changes and those basic functions of your body, but nothing too major. So Jess is willing to come down and help work with teachers, take care of that as well. So she'll get a chance to meet those kiddos a little bit early. We are asking for the ability to use the Great Body Shop as our primary health resource for kindergarten through eighth grade. And I have a couple of samples here. The curriculum committee has seen these, but it's kind of like a little magazine. And so it stays updated. Great nonfiction reading for kids, lots of text features. They can really, the elementary schools can really embed this into their reading. And it covers all of our standards. So everything is aligned. Free to take a look at it. Keith, you've already seen it?
I took some home.
That's a first grade. Took some home, share with your kids. And then there's also a middle school version that Jess Carter is really super excited about and it looks more grown up. This is one of the middle school issues. This one's on safety, injury, and violence prevention. And this is for grade six. It'll say middle school zero on it, but there's a middle school zero, one, and two, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And because we are very budget conscious, these are super reasonable compared to doing textbooks. So we would not be looking at adding any additional money to this.
And they're also more adaptive in textbooks, right?
So much more adaptive.
Like each year, a new version can come out and be now.
Yep. Yeah, so each year, they're updated, you know, and they're meant to go home, right? So at the end of the month, one of these would come every month. At the end of the month, they would come home and on the backside, there's a family bulletin to talk about whatever topics were covered that month. So teachers, elementary teachers were excited about this and Jess Carter was very excited. That would be our primary resource. Of course, we would have to supplement as needed. But this would cover all those segments.
Any other questions?
Would the curriculum committee like to say anything more?
I don't think I have anything to add. I have seen maybe all the samples that she had of this body shop and I really like it. I think, you know, not only because of the cost, but because you buy a textbook, it's outdated as soon as science is, you know, science changes, we learn new things. Well, this is always going to be able to be refreshed, which is kind of nice.
They're very good about being age appropriate. Like we saw the whole span of like K through eight and, you know, they got more, you know, more involved as they get older, but it was very appropriate too, which was nice to see.
And this all seemed to be politically neutral.
Yes, vanilla. They're vanilla.
We did, we already asked that question for you, Tom. Pretty linked in that. Yeah.
I scanned.
Don't chastise the ring discussion.
No. I scanned through all of them just to check and they are, they're very vanilla.
A lot of schools, a lot of districts around the state and around the country use this resource. And then at the high school level, because this does not go up to the high school level, Jess and Ed would continue using the resources that they currently have and they felt like that was sufficient.
Any other questions?
Learn itself, Scott.
I feel, it's really not good.
Scott, I didn't realize I had to hold, Scott would like to take that home with him.
This is the middle school.
Dan definitely.
You guys want to make a motion?
He's learning something too.
Sure.
Can you take it home with you?
I'm going to adopt kindergarten through 12 health curriculum.
Second. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I already promised that the committee would vote for it.
Thank you, guys.
We had that in the notes too, Keith, Justin.
Next, we have consideration to adopt kindergarten through 12 music curriculum.
Thank you. I promise I'm almost done for this year. I do have to bring social studies to you later, but not tonight. So we also, I've also been meeting with the district music teachers over the course of this year to update our K-12 music education curriculum. That was also slated on my curriculum plan to be done this year. Again, those main learning results were updated in the spring of 2022, signed into law, so we did need to update our documents. And so those music teachers have prepared a curriculum across the spans that meets all of those standards, much like the art curriculum that I shared with you a couple of months ago that you approved. This area does lend itself to some level of creativity. And so we didn't really want to pigeonhole us into specific things. However, we wanted to keep in mind that our audience would be those teachers that are doing it right now, stakeholders, community, board members, teachers, but also brand new teachers that might walk in fresh out of high school, high school, fresh out of college. That high school video, I'm kidding you. Fresh out of college. And they may need some guidance on where to go with some of these standards. So in the digital copy that you have, you'll notice all of the standards have a performance or activity example that's currently being used in our music classes to cover those standards. Those would not be a requirement per se, but they would be a guide for music teachers to use from there. Much like I've talked about the other content areas that were covered this year, kindergarten through, well, for us, kindergarten through sixth grade have classroom music lessons that they take as part of their unified arts schedule. And then seventh and eighth grade, it's a choice. So in the curriculum document, those seventh and eighth grade standards would be choice covered. So they are actually considered like an advanced level when you look at the main learning results document. So our basic level standards are met through sixth grade through middle school. And then seventh and eighth would be ensemble ways to cover those standards in ensemble. And then nine through 12, it's not a requirement that all high school students take a music class, but they can meet their fine arts credit in that manner if they choose to. So in that document, at the very end, you'll see some graduation standards if they choose to take that route. And you have a one-pager in your folder for that as well, just to kind of give you some information. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the K-12 music curriculum or the committee, because they saw that last meeting.
Probably wasn't being a very good listener. But does Phys Ed, are they involved in any of this, like through the movement part?
So, well, so they have their own set of standards. So we did not do a crosswalk for that, but that's a good point. Wow, we didn't put that in there. Although they do do some things together. Oh, I could tell John Egan that he could teach that.
Don't see though and all this.
They weren't still teaching it, but they lost the eight-game theater reel.
I will say, we used to have a unified arts kind of fair night at Masling. We haven't done it in a few years, but that was when art, music, and PE all kind of got together and created like a cross-curricular presentation for families who'd done like circus theme.
Yeah, they did that. I remember.
So like the art on display would be with that theme. And Kalina would do music performances and then John would have activities that would match that theme. So they have done a lot of cross-curriculars.
When your daughter was that level.
Yeah.
Curriculum committee staff, they with it?
Yep.
I promise to vote for it.
We got Keith on board. No, it's very agreeable. We have a very agreeable convention. So we do talk about it a lot.
All those in favor?
Who made the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, and I'll come see you later for social studies, so not tonight.
Next, we have evaluation of the fiscal year '26 budget as presented.
So you have from the budget workshop, you have a copy of the final presentation of our budgets and it gets over. It's here. The total is $19,979,216.98, which is a 6.57% year-to-year increase. On that second page, again, you have the local impact of 7.83, the Bucs score of 7.68 to Orland, 5.83 to Prospect, 3.66 to Verona. And the last page was just the cuts that did come out from version two to version three. And again, just as a reminder from our previous board meeting and workshops, there was no personnel cut out of this budget from year to year. There was no major programming. And the conversation we had last time about after-school busing is in there as it is currently, so all three minutes. So we were able to get it under the $20 million. And again, as we talked about at the budget meeting, I appreciate the work that our administrative team and especially Kate Drouly has put into getting you folks a budget that I feel is as ethically responsible as we can while still providing quality program here with the administration. So, and again, I said this at the budget workshop, but for the board meeting. Out that 6.57%, 5.75, or just under that percent of that, goes to salary increases, which we have no control over, health insurance, which came in at 13.75%, paid family medical leave, which is about $90,000 increase to the budget. And local debt is about $120,000 of local debt additionally because of the middle school budget. So those four things make up 5.75% of this increase. And we got about three-quarters of a percent of just stuff costs more this year than it did last year.
I think Josh has done a great job at listening to the board's concerns as presenting a budget that is, just as he explained, as cheap as we could possibly make it without putting him in jeopardy.
Yeah.
So I personally would like very much to make the motion. Not just vote for it, but make the motion to accept this budget as presented.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Next, we have, thank you.
So just to put a bow on that, so May 6th will be when we will sign the warrants or for to go to the district budget meeting. We had originally talked about the last budget meeting at going to the Aspire event on May 6th and then going back to the central office. Where we were able to get this kind of wrapped up, embedded into this meeting, so we weren't quite sure when we were going to get all our numbers. And we had settled on this piece here. What we will do is actually just sign the warrants at the Alamo for the Aspire event. So if we're going to attend that event anyways, we can just sign the warrants there. That way people don't have to bounce around between two different buildings. So we'll still do it.
I like that.
But we've got to focus. We are forced to go with it. Because we've got to be in a certain order. So we've got to focus and get the task done.
Just walk in at the end if you don't want to.
Because we've screwed up the signing before.
In an empty room with no distractions.
So don't forget to bring three sets.
Just remember, you can read my signature. So we will have this all set up and I will set our reminder.
So that's 6:00 PM.
It's kind of a.
6:30.
You're going to bring the pen, right?
The Aspire event's at 5:00.
5:00, yeah, okay.
All right, we'll work on it. So we will land on, everybody could gather there by 6:15.
Oh, yes.
We will, at the end of it, we will sign, we'll have a spot set up.
6:15.
Yeah, I'm going to be there by 6:00.
I'll be there at 5:00.
If I just.
Yes.
No, I just want to.
They'll be at the dairy court at 4:00.
It would be great if you could RSVP for them. I'm RSVPing.
I don't think I can make it number four at 6:00, so do you need to know if we're going to be late? Like I might be able to make it at 6:00. You want to not, I do have the invitation.
I'll say what I can.
Okay.
We said sign it at 6:15. Well, I'm going to be there around 5:00.
Yes, we would like anybody that's able to make it at 5:00 for our celebration of the Aspire event and.
Make sure to ask people.
So please ask.
So even if you're not on the Aspire committee, you'd like us to.
That would be great if you could be there.
You're all, yes, you're all invited to the event.
Got to know how much shrimp to order, right?
That's right. Scrims.
I don't have Mary Far to go. My wife's probably going to be there already, so.
Okay, we'll come get you if you're not there by 5:00.
One way or the other.
Well, let's all go out onto the sidewalk. Tom!
What I do, I do appreciate this one. Again, it's higher than we have had in the past, and obviously there's a lot of contributing factors, but I appreciate this one. But it's done, and then we'll forward.
I just think we're missing an opportunity to make it all nines. Like, can you put some miscellaneous stuff into the budget? I'd love to see it printed as 199999.
Can you try on?
I just don't think it'd be so cool.
I actually said that. I purposely got the whole, that's why it did look like the used car sales.
Oh, I just think it would be great to have that up on the board.
You want to spend more money, you're saying?
Can you believe it?
Spend it.
You must be sick. That one, can you put that in the notes, please?
Yeah, right. Dr. Tripp, Congresswoman, overlap the budget.
This puppy's got 29.
If you gather down, if you guys don't get together. Consideration to grant the superintendent the authority to issue contracts for hiring staff through September 2025.
So this is an annual request that you had already, I've always given Mr. Boothby the permission to do. It's not something that is granted to every superintendent, but I will tell you, especially come summertime, we are all fighting for a very small pool of candidates, and.
So the thing about interviewing too is it's, in my experience, it's never been just one person interviewing. It's usually like a pool of interviewees, interviewers interviewing these candidates. So it's not like, it's not like you're on an island.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
It has saved us employees, and as we've been able to offer contracts and they have signed.
Yeah.
And they potentially, you know, if it's June, July, and you're looking for a job, and you have one with a signed contract and one that maybe if the board approves me, two and a half weeks from now. You know, we have lost those people. But again, it is, it is something that you're entrusted to be able to do. It's not something that you have to do by any means.
And this is for all staff or not administrative staff?
We would not do an administrator. We would always bring an administrator to the board. I didn't word it that way, and it's not really been worded that way in the past, but our past practice has just been support staff and teachers.
Well, I move that we grant the superintendent the authority to issue contracts when hiring staff through September 2025.
Second.
I do have a comment. I would like, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees, but just making this like an ongoing thing until we change our mind and decide to take the power away.
Make it permanent.
Yeah.
So we usually give it back till September, and when we're back in session and we're meeting regularly.
Well, what if something, I mean, I'm not opposed to you hiring somebody in between board meetings, if between the month, you know, and then bringing it to us at the time. I mean, I don't think it's.
He's new.
I appreciate that.
But obviously, we entrusted to do this, like we entrusted to hire him, like we do. It doesn't matter that he's new.
We'll still interview, our team will interview.
It's, it's basic.
New with the spoonful.
What I would, my rep and I appreciate this, I don't think we have run into a situation, once a school year starts, that it is as necessary where, because people are usually locked in, they have a hold on them after a practice, so.
Because their, their contract requires them to give like 196 days notice before they can leave, so.
And, and quite often, and again, as much as I appreciate the trust, and it is a unique situation, you folks are elected to make these decisions, and because ultimately, if something goes wrong, you're going to be the ones who end up dismissing something that's not going well. So if we're going to put you in a spot to be dismissing people, should be the one, the majority of the time, that is.
This has worked well in the past.
Yeah, no way. It's a great thing.
Yeah, but again, I appreciate that. I just think it's.
Not necessary, except for the summer. Totally fine.
And if we ever needed to, I would call a special board meeting.
We did have a long time. All those in favor? Senior, thank you. Next, we have calendar and announcements. Curriculum committee, May 1st, 6 o'clock, central office. Policy committee, May 13th, 6 o'clock, central office. Finance committee, May 20th, 5:30, right here. School board meeting, May 20th, at 6 o'clock, right here. Facilities committee, May 15th, 4 o'clock, central office. Aspire, even though it's a committee, everybody's supposed to go.
We're still having our main first meeting.
Yeah, that's May 1st.
Five days.
Different one, yeah.
Because we didn't do any.
I figured this out, moving back, so, okay. Or I would have been hanging out with you. Aspire committee, May 1st, 5 o'clock, central office. Signing of the warrants is at May 6, at 6:30 at the Alamo, but you really want us there at 5:00.
Correct, if you're going to be there for the event.
That's, that's the one that's 5:00.
So those are the subcommittees. There are a few other events that I just want you to put on your calendar to write down. So first one, the district budget meeting, we have booked that May 22nd, which is a Thursday. The issue with May 22nd is that is the same night as a town council meeting in Bucksport, and that is, even though we don't have a ton of overlap of people, I think it's best that we shy away from that. So we'll be looking at May 21st, the day before, which is a Wednesday. That still puts us in time of, again, working backwards from the referendum in June, to when we have to have the district budget meeting, to when we have to sign the warrants, so today. So that puts us on May 21st, which is a Wednesday, that is at 7:00 at the auditorium. And I apologize for that change on that, but that is going to be necessary again, I think, to avoid that. On May 28th, you'll be getting an invitation, but that is going to be the academic banquet that we have here at the high school that you'll be invited to. That is, starts at 5:00, scheduled for the 17th. And we do not have to grant this request, but I was just asking if we could think about moving the board meeting preferably to the 16th, which would be that Monday, the day before.
Hold on. What day?
I'm putting things in fast.
That would be the 16th, which is a Monday.
The June 16th.
I wrote it down, I put it in.
Sure.
Yeah, I worked on.
So moved as far as I'm concerned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's public, you know, so I apologize for that, but.
So that's Monday, June 16th.
Correct. There are about 37 other events happening between now and the first one May. What I will do is I will work with Mrs. Hall. We will have a whole list of these. We have already started them at the 18 level. We will parse out the ones that will impact you folks that you may be interested in. We'll get those out. We'll let you know which ones that we would like you to RSVP to.
We'll highlight them.
And, and so things like graduation, so Mr. Ward can plant on seats and things like that. And, and I appreciate Mr. Ward's sentiment of planning the graduation now, but just remember, folks, that this is your ceremony, the graduation ceremony. You know, you have always authorized, you know, me before this, you know, previous high school principal has planned that, but that is a board ceremony. That is under your direction. You have just always granted the high school principal kind of plan it and run with it and keep you updated. So what should be granted you to do.
Josh, are we, are we ready to adjourn now? I just want to, I wanted to add something. Whatever I wanted to add, I know it's not on the agenda, but it just struck me, Mr. Boynton being nominated for and accepting the honorary or the Teacher of the Year up to the main paper days two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and.
So we're, for administrator reports in May, it's going to be more of a recognition. We actually have a number of staff that have been recognized either by giving awards such as Mr. Boynton or have been nominated for County Teacher of the Year. I believe we're up to three nominations right now in the district. We have some finalists that are in there. And then we have a bunch of like students. So I would like our administrator reports in May will be a lot of recognizing of staff's student's achievements and regular for you folks, for public recognition.
And off that, I attended that, that night that they honored him. Evan Donnell got up and gave a really nice speech about him. Then also, we had, I think, four, three more Bucksport graduates who were there. Class of '78, Jeff Cross, who gave a scholarship. His brother Mark was big in the paper industry, he's class of '75. Then Andy Silvernail gave a, he was the honorary guest of the night. He couldn't make it. He had to give a video speech from London, because they had business over there, so Bucksport was represented real well that night. So that was all the engineers up to Orno. It was a big, big deal.
And there was a number of students that have received Fulham Paper scholarships that were in attendance there, had students there.
Harry.
What's that? Harry was there, when was there?
Pretty impressive, yeah, that night.
That was, I'm sorry, I knew there was one more date. June 9th, and this is optional, it's at 3:00, but that's when we will be doing the dedication of the Silvernail.
Oh, good.
So that's a Monday.
It's at 3:00.
What time?
3:00.
3:00.
And that is 100% around Andy's schedule.
June 9.
Because what he's.
At 2:00.
Most of these things.
June 9.
And that will be at 8:00.
It will be right here, yeah. And I will send out an invite for that as well.
It's the dedication ceremony for.
You're revealing the sign on the, the sign that's way there.
Monday, 3:00 P.M.
Most of these things you've mentioned have been in the reports.
They, they have, but we just need one go-to list, so I will, I will get all that. That will be it.
All right. Anything else? Can I would look for a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And that is the end. Thank you.